Body, and therefore we cannot accept gifts or raise funds.
Who is "we"?
MOBAC.
Oh. Hi, Harish. Oh, you're muted.
There.
There you are. You're unmuted now. Yeah.
Great.
So if MOBAC can't accept donations or contract or anything, can PLP?
I don't think they would be interested because they're such a big body. They cover
Wow.
San Francisco Bay Area.
Okay, we'll start the countdown. Five, four...
Recording in progress.
Three. Good afternoon and welcome to the September 23, 2021, meeting of the Board of Library Trustees. I'll call the meeting to order and ask Francesca to call the roll, please.
Yes. Trustee Joshi.
Present.
Trustee Moreau.
Here.
Trustee Petty. Oh, you're muted. There you are.
No, I'm not.
I just unmuted you.
Are you here? Are you here is the question.
Yeah, well, I'm at least where I am. So if here is here, I'm here. I might not be there, but I am here. Wherever the gold star is on the map, on the trails, you know, that's where I am. At any rate, the computer that I usually turn on over my right shoulder here, where I would have the agenda and everything, I went to do that, and it's now unbeknownst to me, eighty-nine percent done with updates. So I'll have to follow along your lead, Jim, until another eleven percent of update takes place there.
Okay.
I just won't be as dumb as I am acting.
Fair enough. Fair enough. We appreciate the warning. I lost track.
I won't notice any different from, you know, the usual.
Okay, Francesca, could you complete the roll call, please?
Thank you. Vice Chair Felgu.
Present.
Chair Thompson.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Francesca, and I'd also like to ask Francesca to give us a summary of how the public may participate in this meeting. But before she does that, I did want to highlight, as was mentioned just a minute ago, that this is a hybrid meeting of our library board, the second one. We had our first one last month. And that means that people can participate either virtually, such as through Zoom, or in person in the city council chambers. And all of the library board trustees are participating virtually, as is our library director. But Francesca Garibaldi, our administrative assistant, is holding down the fort there in the council chambers. So if anyone wants to come in person, feel free to do so at the council chambers, but be sure to wear a mask if you do so. So Francesca, with that, if you could give a little further summary of how the public can participate in this meeting.
Thank you. As Chair Thompson mentioned, the City of Monterey is committed to the safe public attendance of its public meetings. Masks are required for all, regardless of vaccination status, except for those who are younger than two years old or have a medical condition that prevents wearing a mask. We ask that you please keep phones and device speakers muted in order to prevent audio interference and feedback with the hybrid meeting. If you aren't joining us in person here at the council chambers, there are two ways to virtually participate in Board of Library Trustees meetings. One is by joining directly on Zoom Gov from your computer or mobile device. And the second is to join by calling into the meeting. To join the meeting on Zoom, use the link or phone number on the agenda at isearchmonterey.org. And since the meeting has started, you'll find the agenda under the recent tab. To join by telephone, dial toll-free 833-568-8864. Then enter meeting ID 1613528864. And if prompted to enter a participant ID, press pound. Detailed instructions on using Zoom are available at monterey.org-publiccomments. Lastly, to make a public comment using Zoom, you'll raise your hand. However, if you're calling on the phone, you will raise your hand by pressing star nine. And this concludes how the public can participate in public comments.
Thank you very much, Francesca. And I have one other introductory comment before we move on to the consent items on our agenda. And that's just to let everyone know that this is a fairly short agenda for this meeting, unusually short. And that's intentional because after our open session is finished, we do have a closed session. And we want to be sure to leave adequate time before we have a fairly short agenda today at our library board meeting. With that introduction, we move on to the consent items. And in this case, there's only one item on our consent agenda, which is item number one. Approval of the minutes from the August 26, 2020 by Jennifer. Any further discussion? If not, please call the roll.
Trustee Joshi.
Approve.
Trustee Moreau.
Approve.
Trustee Petty.
Approve.
Vice Chair Felgu.
Approve.
And Chair Thompson.
Yes, so the motion is approved unanimously, and that's the end of the consent agenda. And so we'll move on to public comments. This is an opportunity for any member of the public to address the library board on any subject that is not on the agenda for our meeting today. So Francesca, could you once again check to see if there's any public comment under the public comment section of today's meeting?
Yes. To make a public comment, please raise your hand using Zoom. Or if you are connected by phone, dial star nine to raise your hand. At this time, there are no public comments.
Thank you, Francesca. Then we'll move on to the public appearance section of our agenda. And in that one, we have one item today, and that's item number two, to authorize the library director to explore options regarding a photo archives collection. And I know Inga attended a MOBAC meeting last Friday, and she probably has some updates related to that and maybe some other new information as well. So Inga, if you could give us an update on this interesting situation that we have before us.
Of course. So this pertains to the Pat Hathaway collection. He was a local photographer and photo collector on the peninsula for many decades. And he passed away unexpectedly in January. And the executor of the state is interested in having the collection stay locally because the eighty thousand plus photographs pertain mostly to our local area. So CSUMB was initially approached to see if their library archives would take on the collection. And it was determined that it wasn't a perfect match with their collection policy. So then we had proposed that MOBAC, which is a consortium, consider taking it on as a group. And we had a MOBAC administrative council meeting on Friday of last week and created a subcommittee. And we're going to look into the possibility of taking this on as a joint venture with the idea that the collection could be eventually divided up so that the portions of the collection that pertain to the history of Pacific Grove would go to the Pacific Grove Library, pertain to Salinas, would go to the Salinas Public Library, et cetera. And so I'm on a committee, a subcommittee, that was looking into that. The great news was that Hartnell College has a large archives room that has adequate shelving and so forth, climate controlled, and plenty of space. So, but no archivists, so they might be a temporary place to house the collection as the collection is indexed and split up. I learned today, however, that MOBAC as a body, because some years ago, the consortium became part of a larger consortium called the Pacific Library Partnership, MOBAC lost its ability to accept gifts of materials and is no longer able to, or is also not able to raise funds. And so it doesn't look like the body, the formal body, MOBAC, is going to be the right body to take this on as a gift. So the recommendation stands that you authorize me to continue looking into whether a smaller group of libraries might form a partnership or Monterey Public Library might pursue it on our own. And I will add that I met with Kent Seavey today, who is the executor. And he said that for two years, he and Dennis Copeland did try to get the collection to us while Pat was still alive. And so he is very comfortable with the idea of Monterey Public Library and the City of Monterey taking on the collection. But if a group of local libraries also wants to get together, if that seems like a better approach, then he welcomes that as well. And he also said that ideally, since the collection is in Pat Hathaway's home, the family, the heirs, would like the collection removed from there by the end of this calendar year.
Is that the end of your update?
That concludes my updating.
Okay, good. Thank you. I imagine we'll have some questions. Anybody have a clarifying question they'd like to start with? Marcia.
I'm not sure if it's a clarifying question or a general question, but if, in fact, this collection were given to MPL, do we have climate-controlled archive space to house it?
Right. So we currently don't have adequate climate-controlled archival space to house it. So one possibility that we had considered when we were thinking as a group, MOBAC, we would take this on, is renting storage space. That's before Hartnell proposed their storage space. And I don't know if Hartnell would be amenable to the idea of storing the collection temporarily for one library. Of course, the idea would be that our library would still probably, you know, break up the collection and transfer things that seem to belong better with Pacific Grove to Pacific Grove and so forth.
And a follow-up is about personnel, about an archivist to deal with that. I know we have a California history person, but is that person have the bandwidth to do this?
Right. So right now, our local history librarian is twenty hours a week. In January, he will become full-time again, which is great. But we have plenty of work for him already to do in the library. So when we were talking about the MOBAC group taking it on, we were thinking that we could use some of the MOBAC funding to have at least a person on an hourly basis index the collection. So that would, if we were to take it on, we would need to do something like that. And that would require some fundraising.
Right. So is there a sense that the consortium would fundraise for an archivist for Monterey Public Library?
No, we found out that the consortium can't fundraise.
Right. Yeah, but I mean, that informal consortium of local libraries.
The thinking is that, not that the libraries would fundraise, but that we would need to do some fundraising. There has, there has been the suggestion that the heirs who own the home would make a contribution once they were able to sell the house. But, you know, can't count, I don't want to count your chickens before they're hatched. And when Pat Hathaway first passed away, several people approached me and said that they would like to support the collection if we were to acquire it. And also, some other names of people who are interested in providing support have been suggested, but nothing definite. Plus, also, there's the Community Foundation, and somebody associated with Community Foundation had suggested that there are some funds available through Community Foundation for this sort of project. Thank you.
Other trustees have questions?
It looks like Bob has a hand raised.
Oh, yes. I'm sorry, Bob. I didn't see your... I'm used to doing it with the hand signal, so.
All right. I'll give you the finger the next time instead of raising my yellow hand.
That's fine.
Um. So Inga answered one of my questions a second ago when she said that basically MOBAC is out of the picture because of their affiliation with this broader groups at the state level that prohibits them from doing the things that are necessary to acquire and maintain and manage the photo collection. Do you have, and if not, I guess we would ask you to try to figure out what it would cost to either rent or borrow some other institution's storage area that would be proper for these photos? Because I don't know that they would just say, hey, sure, we got tons of space. Bring it on over. I would imagine there might be some kind of cost involved there. And secondly, the point you made about hiring somebody to codify all these things and to index them and so forth. You know, it would be nice to have some idea, at least for me, of how many hours, how much money are we talking about to put them in an index? And if... Now, maybe Pat had his own method of indexing, kind of like my archaeological way of filing things from bottom to top in piles. And I just know how far down to go to find something that you asked for. But when I was in his shop on Pacific there, you know, the pictures are just all over in files and everything. And so it could be that indexing them might be quite a big job. And, you know, I assume that there are criteria for indexing them by date, by state, by author, by subject of the photo and all of that. And so some idea of how much that would cost, I think, would be very, very useful information. Not just if we try to do it solo, but if we try to hold hands with other libraries, we consider them, well, we need X dollars, and, you know, we'll pay fifty-one percent. And that gives us maybe fifty-one percent of the ruling power over what happens. But, you know, just to find out what we're looking at. And how much we would need to fundraise. Because no matter what it is, I think we ought to do something to try to raise the money to make this happen.
Other clarifying questions before we go to public input? I have a couple myself. One is, did I understand correctly from what you said that MOBAC probably, even though they have some money in a reserve fund of some sort, that they would probably not be likely to look favorably on using some of that for this project?
Yes. That's my understanding, although I haven't checked back in with the committee. But it seems like if they can't own it as a group, they might be hesitant to spend a group fund on something that'd only then be owned by individual libraries.
Yeah, no, I understand. And the second question I had was, is Hartnell a member of MOBAC?
Yes.
Yes.
And are they, is it your sense that they were only possibly considering doing storage on a temporary basis, or are they perhaps interested in a longer-term involvement? Or do you know?
No, I think, I think they were, so the subject came up that there will be some funds available when the house is sold. But in order to sell the house, the collection needs to be moved. And so maybe some MOBAC funds would be put towards rental fees. And that's when Hartnell, the Hartnell representative said, hey, you know, we've got a big space. We could temporarily house it.
Yeah. Okay. Any other clarifying questions before public input? If not, then, I'm sorry.
This is Inga. I could add one more thing, which, you know, is possibly good or not, is that, of course, Pat Hathaway also had a business of selling prints. And all of those prints are in the house and would come to the library that takes this on, or the group of libraries. And so if you had a group like a Friends and Foundation or so forth, they might be able to make some money selling the prints that have already been, you know, matted and mounted or whatever they are, you know, already printed out and so forth. But, you know, that's one of those things where you don't know, would you instantly have a market and be able to sell these things, or would you not? So.
Yeah. Very good. Then Francesca, could you check and see if there's any public comment on item number two?
Yes. To make a public comment, please raise your hand using Zoom. Or if you are connected by phone, dial star nine to raise your hand. At this time, there are no public comments. Chair Thompson.
Okay, thank you. Then any general discussion by the trustees or comments? Bob?
Inga, you said there are a bunch of documents, prints, that either will be and/or already have been set up for sale. And I assume from what you said that the family wouldn't mind whoever took over the collection, selling them and using that money. Do, you know, city manager's office is always asking us, how can you make money? How can you make money? Beyond the point where I think it's reasonable personally. But if we need money to do the whole thing, but we can look at potential earnings from selling prints, I wonder if there is a way that the city would front us the money, kind of like a loan, to do the whole thing? And then we would pay that back out of the proceeds of selling prints? Just a thought of a way to finance it.
Right. There's also typically the cost of when researchers contact you and ask if you have a particular image, then there's a fee that the institution will charge. We currently charge a fee. Both the library charges a fee, and then if it's the museum that has the print, they charge a fee as well. So there's that sort of income. I did point out to Kent Seavey, I said, well, Pat Hathaway didn't, you know, wasn't, didn't make a million dollars. And that was his business. And yeah, so there would be some income, but I don't know how much it would be.
Other comments or discussion?
I was just wondering about what does eighty thousand prints look like? Have they been, have they been digitized? Some of them have been digitized, but not all. So the first thing, someone would have to digitize the collection as well.
So the collection, we don't know how many of the images have been digitized, but many thousands of images have been digitized. When CSUMB staff looked at Pat's computer, they noticed that they were saved, I believe, as TIP files. And the resolution wasn't the typical resolution that you use for archival storage of photographs. So they've been digitized in a way that's usable and resellable, but not necessarily up to archival standards. Another thing is that the state of California has an archival photograph program called California Revealed, where you can apply, then you send them your photographs. They digitize them for you. They send you back your originals. And then the state adds those digital images to a statewide photo archives. So there are programs like that. That's how the county library digitized many hundreds of... So there are programs like that. That's how the county library digitized many hundreds of their images.
And did they charge for that service or is that?
No, it's, it's a, you apply and then it's, it's like a grant. They don't give you the money, they do the work.
That's quite wonderful. So, so, so you got a sense that the next steps are for you to continue the conversation. And with both Hartnell and Kent and this group of libraries.
And to see how we want to proceed, but I, I don't want to be putting my time into it without having the library board's blessing.
Yeah, I think that's totally appropriate. And I'd just like to offer a couple of comments. One, it seems to me that this is a historic opportunity. I was actually on the city staff way back when, a couple of library directors ago, had discussions with Pat Hathaway about the city taking over the collection. And I actually attended a meeting myself with Pat, and I believe it was Paula Simpson at that time. So I'm aware of how long the city's been trying to figure out a way to preserve this collection. On the other hand, it seems to me this is a pretty big task. You know, just doing the, you know, finding enough funding to do the storage and the inventory will be a fairly significant endeavor, I think. And then actually doing the inventory and figuring out, you know, kind of organizationally how to do it. I mean, it, you know, obviously the city could do it itself in some fashion, or we could perhaps work with other cities and form a joint powers agreement or whatever. And if that's the case, then there's a number of financial and risk management and legal issues with that, both the Joint Powers Authority and copyright issues. I mean, the head kind of spins thinking of all the issues that would need to be resolved. And we have very limited staff right now. And so part of me is a little leery of taking on a project that I don't know, you know, how it'll play out, because as somebody said, Pat Hathaway worked on this many years and never made a whole lot of money at it, as far as I know. And so that's kind of a red flag itself, I think, in terms of whether it would be self-supporting or not. And given the city's fiscal crisis, that makes it even more of a challenge, I think. So given all that, you know, I'm cautious, but it seems to me it's such a historic opportunity that we probably should authorize Inga to proceed. But I think with a fair amount of prudence, because I, I don't think this is a slam dunk. Other comments or anybody like to make a motion? Bob?
I move that we authorize library director to explore options regarding the photo collection of Pat Hathaway.
Is there a second?
I'll second it. And, and does it go without saying that it will then come back to the board after this fact finding and discussion? Or do we have to add that to the motion?
I should think that would go without saying.
Yeah, I think that's implied. I think we would all certainly expect that, especially if there's financial issues, and there certainly are. We'd also need coordination clearly with the city manager's office and the city attorney and the risk manager, and I don't even know who. Okay, we have a motion by Bob, seconded by Jennifer. Any further discussion on the motion? And I believe we've already asked for public input. Is that correct, Francesca?
I believe so, and sadly, I also.
Yes, I remember you asking for input and there being none.
Okay, I'm pretty sure I had done that, but I just want to be 100% sure because it's a significant issue. Okay, if there's no further discussion, please call the role, Francesca.
Trustee Joshi.
Yes.
Trustee Moreau.
Yes.
Trustee Petty.
Yes.
Vice Chair Felguth.
Yes.
Chair Thompson.
Yes. Motion carries unanimously, and thank you very much for the updating, Inga. And good luck. We look forward to hearing more about, about this endeavor.
Thank you.
Moving on then, that's the end of our public appearance items. The next section of our agenda is for informational reports and staff comments. And we'll start off with number three, the library activity report. Inga, could you give us a little bit of an update on this item? This is item number three.
Sure. So the library board used to receive monthly activity reports. We stopped doing that after the significant layoff of staff and our closure. And so talking with Vice Chair Felguth and Chair Thompson, we thought of bringing back quarterly reports. So this is a first quarterly activity report. And because the fiscal year, so this is through August. So the fiscal year just started, so we talk a little bit about July, but it mostly focused on August. And my main question to you is, do you find this useful? We're planning to do them quarterly unless you tell us you don't find them very useful. And is there something that we could do to make it more useful, such as perhaps try to work on some brevity? So I would just like some feedback about it and also to take questions.
Okay, good. Any clarifying questions before we ask for public input and have general discussion? If not, then Francesca, could you see if there's any public input on item number three?
Yes, to make a public comment on Zoom, please raise your hand. If you are connected by phone, dial star nine. When called upon, dial star six to unmute yourself. There are no public comments at this time.
Thank you, Francesca. Any discussion or any response to Inga's request for feedback on how often to do these reports and how to do them, or if they're in fact useful at all? Marcia?
I think it's, I think it was very useful, and particularly because, you know, there's limited, we're not spending that much time in the library. It really gives us a sense of what's going on. I think it was well-written and comprehensive and, and, and very good. I, I, I like the idea of it being quarterly rather than monthly, because I think that takes up too much time. And hopefully, this, this was a compendium of stuff from other, from other folks too, I would hope. Yeah, I think it's very good.
Yeah, I, I do want to say that it was compiled by Kim Smith. So I think she did a great job. She asked all of the staff to submit that what they've been working on and to try to focus on some interesting highlights and tidbits and so forth. And then she pulled it together. I think she did a really great job.
I, I think it also gives them an opportunity to kind of reflect on what they've done the last quarter or two. I think it's, it's, it's good for the staff to be able to reflect on all those accomplishments as well.
Yeah, good point. Other comments from the trustees? Yes, Jennifer?
Yeah, I just found it very useful. I agree with Marcia, since we can't be there physically on a day-to-day basis, I feel like it really links me up with what, what's happening on an ongoing basis. I get a real flavor for how the operation's being run, what the public reaction is. It's really, I, I find it useful. So thank you.
Well, I, I think we may have a consensus that the trustees think it is useful and think quarterly is good. And I might add that it probably could be a little briefer in certain areas. So I think it would be fine to be a little bit more brief. Is everybody okay with that kind of general consensus? Okay, very good. If nothing else on that item, then let's move on.
Bob has.
Oh, I'm sorry, Bob, I missed it. Go ahead, Bob.
I just wanted to add, I agree with what has been said about the quarterly frequency. If something that would normally be included in this report, that Inga considers just, you know, off the chart important, you shouldn't hesitate and say, well, I got two more months before the quarterly report. I'll just put it in the, you know, in the document for then. I would request that that be brought to our attention even sooner, despite the fact that it might be in a quarterly activity report under normal circumstances, when there's something that you judge to be, you know, like I say, off the chart important or outstanding or worthy of us knowing about even before we get our activity report, anything like that.
Yeah, I think that's a good, good point. I would think that all the trustees would agree with that suggestion. Okay, if nothing else, moving on to item four, the financial report. Is there anything you'd like to highlight about that, Inga?
Well, other than under revenue for the trust fund, I haven't gotten the finance department to put in our number for fund development and how much we plan to raise. But other than that, and that was, just as a reminder, it's because we were told to postpone submitting anything about the trust fund and then told, oh, it was too late to submit anything about the trust fund. And then it's like, oh, sure, you can, you know, submit something about the trust fund. And the current thinking is, when they do the mid-year adjustment, that will be a good time to make the corrections, have them approved by counsel without having to call them out specifically.
Good. And if I could just add to that, I think part of the problems that we've had with some of the financial reports probably relates to some turnover in the finance department. And for those of you that might not have heard yet, the city did appoint a new finance director who started this past Monday. So hopefully with, with that position filled, and I think there are some other positions that have also been filled that were at least temporarily vacant. Hopefully, we can get some stronger cooperation and coordination with finance and some of these reports. So any other questions or clarifications on, on the finance report? If not, Francesca, could you see if there's any public input on item number four?
Yes, to make a public comment on Zoom, please raise your hand. If you are connected by phone, dial star nine to raise your hand. And when called upon, dial star six to unmute yourself. There are no public comments at this time, Chair Thompson.
Thank you, Francesca. Is there any more trustee comment on the financial report or questions? If not, then let's move on to item number five, which is to receive the statistical report. Is there any overview you'd like to provide a bit on that, Inga?
Sure. So this is the new way that we're reporting to you our monthly statistics, which is to have one page that compares the current month with a year ago, that month. So you've got August 2021 compared to August 2020. And then you have September through August of 19 through 20, September through August of 20 through 21. So that's on one page. But the new thing is now we add the previous year compared to its previous year, so that you kind of get a better sense of what would be typical in the library prior to closure. And one thing I did want to point out, that was pointed out to me by Chair Thompson, is the use of our self-check machines. So if you look on packet page 20, and you look at August 2021 compared to August of 20, well, the number looks really good. Because of course, we were closed in August of 20, and the only use of the self-checks was by our volunteers. And you look and see that currently, it's almost half and half how much the self-checks are used versus how much is being done at the desk. So that doesn't look too bad. But if you look at the pre, at the next page, you see that in the past, in August of 2019, it was three times as much self-check use as help desk use. So we had thought, by moving the self-checks, as we've done, to right next to the desk, this was going to encourage people to use the self-checks, because they would be going towards the desk. And they say, oh, well, the self-checks are right there. I'll use the self-checks. But it looks like that's not quite happening, so we're going to need to do some tweaking. And I've talked to the staff about encouraging people more to use those self-check machines. So anyway, so I think that's a useful, shows how useful this new report is. I just want to call that to your attention.
Very good, thank you. Any clarifying questions about the statistical report? If not, Francesca, could you see if there's any public comment on item number five?
To make a public comment on Zoom, please raise your hand. If you are connected by phone, dial star nine to raise your hand. When called upon, dial star six to unmute yourself. There are no public comments at this time, Chair Thompson.
Thank you, Francesca. Is there any other trustee comments or questions about the statistical report? Okay, well, thank you very much. Then still under informational reports and staff comments, I just wanted to see if in addition to the three written reports on our agenda, you have any verbal comments you'd like to make, Inga?
Thank you for that opportunity, but no, not at this time. And I know we were wanting to have this be a short meeting, so.
Yeah, very good. Okay, then moving on to trustee comments, section of our meeting, and let's start with trustee Joshi.
I don't know any comments this time.
Okay, trustee Mora.
Just that we're all struggling to get used to the new website. And thanks, thank you to David for anything he can do to make it. We all got used to the old one, so maybe it's just that it's hard to teach an old dog new tricks. But it's a challenge, that website, so I hope they continue to work on it.
Marcia, if there's anything in particular that you're hoping we could improve, feel free to shoot, shoot me an email. And we also, or what would it cost if we were able to have our own portal page? I don't know if you've looked at Pacific Grove, but they use the same company. Pacific Grove uses the same company as we did, and you can sort of see night and day.
Thanks, we'll do.
Trustee Petty?
I'm trying to figure out what the problems with the website are that Marcia's referring to. Because I, are you talking about the one where you search the catalog? Or are you talking about the one that lists all of the upcoming programs?
I'm talking about the front page, getting from the front page to the, to the things that you always looked for before.
Talking about the website, not about the library catalog.
Yeah, yes, right, not the catalog, the, the new website.
Okay.
Any other comments, Bob?
No, no. No, I'm, I'm fine. I guess when we've already passed by the statistical report and Inga gave a example of the self-check as one example of the data in there. When I've gone in recently to the library, it, it felt like there weren't many people in it. But when I asked the staff, how is it busy? Are there people coming and everything? Even several of them, different ones on different days, they said, oh, yeah, we've got back up to about as busy as we used to be. So, I don't know, just an observation. It, it didn't feel like it was. And I'm not complaining that it's not crowded by, by any means. But it, I mean, if everybody's happy and getting served, then that's all we can ask for and hope for. But the, is, is, I guess I should ask Inga, is it a problem? People asking to have their books checked out by a librarian compared to before?
Yes, so, so the idea was, we used to have four stations at the help desk. And we'd have up to four people out there helping people during our busiest, our peak hours, and typically just three staff. So in our new staffing model, we went down to just having two people at the desk. And with the potential of a third person coming out, but not being able to do all the things that the other two can do. So really, down to two people. So the hope was that by putting the self-check machine so close to the desk, we would be referring more easily people to use the self-check machine, since we have fewer staff.
I think it'd be helpful in the future to get kind of further updates on this particular issue, because it certainly is a question of public service, as well as staff efficiency, kind of all wrapped into one, it seems to me.
And I, I'm sorry to speak out of turn, but I, I also maybe we forgot to talk about sidewalk service and whether people are actually using that.
Yeah, I think we'll have a report back on that sometime later in the fall. Is that your understanding, Inga?
Yes.
Okay, moving on, Vice Chair Felguth.
I was curious what the impact has been now that school's back in session. Are you being inundated at 3:15 again every single day? And how is that working out?
We are, but they, they tend not to stay. Teens tend not to stay, but we're seeing incident reports again with people being rowdy and yelling and being inappropriate with staff and that sort of thing, the typical kinds of things where teens have to be asked to leave. And because we don't have our community room open with some kind of exciting program for teens going on, they tend not to stay around very much, although some kids still stay. stay around very much, although some kids still stay to do studying. And then also because their parents are going to pick them up after school. I would say one interesting thing was that I was there on a Monday, of course, we're closed on a Monday, and I left the building to mail something, and apparently staff had not locked one of the doors properly. And right when the kids were all leaving school, coming down the hill, we had sixteen people enter the library. And they set up all the alarms, so they ran out. But that is a phenomenon that I see on Mondays when I'm in the building, is lots of teens are trying to get in. And I did have to turn the family away and say, you know, sorry, Mondays were not open currently, so. Yeah.
Okay. And under chair comments, I just had one, one comment. Many of you know that just until this week, there was some question about whether we would be able to continue to have virtual meetings or hybrid meetings, or whether we might have to go back to in-person meetings as of October one. And just to give you an update, that the legislature did pass, and the governor signed a bill called AB 361, that while I haven't gotten a full readout from the city attorney or city clerk or anyone, it's my impression that that will, as long as the governor's emergency order continues to be in effect, I believe it will continue to allow us to have our virtual or hybrid meetings. And I'm sure that we'll hear more about that in the future, but I'm almost certain that at least our October meeting will be, will have the option of participating virtually as well as in person. But we'll hear more about that later, I'm sure. So that's the end of the trustee comments, and then next on our agenda is public comments on closed session. We do, after today's open session adjourns, will be will be having a meeting in closed session for a performance evaluation, our annual evaluation of the library director. So at this point, this is an opportunity for the public to provide any comments on that closed session item. So Francesca, could you see if there's anyone that wishes to make a public comment on the closed session performance evaluation item?
Yes, and as always, we encourage members of the public to join our meeting via Zoom Gov. You will be connected live in real time to the meeting. To make a public comment on Zoom, raise your hand. If you are connected by phone, dial star nine to raise your hand. When called upon, dial star six to unmute yourself. There are no public comments at this time, Chair Thompson.
Okay, thank you, Francesca. Then seeing no other business to come before the library board, we'll adjourn this meeting, and I'd ask the trustees to leave this Zoom meeting and, and then re-log into our closed session meeting shortly. So thank you very much, and everyone have a good afternoon and evening.